The council meeting will please come to order. If you would rise and give your attention to Councilwoman Schwartz for the implication, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to introduce Reverend Dr. Neil Bueno. He's with the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church that is celebrating its 25th anniversary. My brother happened to be an elder when that started. He's been with, the pastor's been with the church for the last 15 years.
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman. From the word of God, we hear these words from the prophet Micah. And what, oh child of God, does the Lord require of you? But to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk faithfully with your God. Let us pray. Lord God, we give you all thanks and praise for the blessings of good government. Thank you for the gifts of life, liberty, and opportunity. Thank you for good and courageous civic leaders, men and women, willing to shoulder responsibility and to exercise it with integrity and fidelity. And now, oh Lord God, even as we give you our thanks and praise, so also do we lift in prayer those who govern. Let your Spirit of wisdom rest on these leaders tonight in all their deliberations and decisions. Grant to the city council, the mayor, the city manager, and all who serve our city in either an elected or appointed capacity what they need to govern and serve with compassion for the least fortunate, mercy for the offender, justice for the oppressed, and hope for the hopeless. Let them exercise power with humility, that their leadership may bless our community, and we may all, together, lead lives of peace and prosperity. These and whatsoever other prayers we set before you in the silence and privacy of our hearts, we bring in faith, mindful of your promised blessing. For you are the Holy God, the one who is our Lord alone, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations tonight, so we will proceed with the presentations. And with the city manager's consent, I would like to introduce the Citizens Review Committee, who will be presenting their report. The chair is Jim Reardon. You would stand, please. Then also the other members are Maynard Oliverius, Tina Williams, John Knave, and Judy Moller. And on behalf of the council, we thank you for your diligence, the hours you have done in the last period of time since January, and with the recommendations tonight, which we look forward to receiving. Thank you. And then, Jim, if you want to come up to the podium to present that. And council members, I believe we received a copy of the, of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I want, I have just a limited amount of time, so I want to get right into the review and recommendations. To our knowledge, this is the, actually maybe the fourth Citizens Review Committee authorized by the city of Topeka, the third by the council, and the fourth overall. The 1983 Citizens Committee adopted the, what we called the strong form mayor of government. In 1990, there was a charter review, and recommendations were made at that time. The, there was a strong mayor, city council, former government, and that took place with the charter review. 1999, there was a Citizens Review, and several recommendations, including consolidation of city-county government. None of those were implemented, but the matter of consolidation did come to a vote, and despite community-wide support of the proposal and an ultimate vote at the polls, it carried 70 to 30, 70 percent to 30 percent of all voters, but the measure was doomed primarily by the adoption of the dual-majority voting requirements. In 2005, the council manager form of government became effective, and that's important because the passage occurred in response to concerns by a combination of business leaders, community leaders, and elected officials who wanted the governing body to end what seemed to be personality clashes and to move forward in a more progressive manner. As a result of the transition to the city manager form of government and the transfer of duties to the city manager, the mayor's salary was substantially reduced. It was anticipated that the role of the mayor would be diminished by the transfer of administrative duties to the city manager, and as a result, the mayor's salary was very substantially cut. Now that brings us to 2014, the committee to review the form of government for the city. We found many positives about the current form of government and the men and women who are entrusted with the governance of our community. We heard a few actionable complaints in the two public hearings held at the Topeka Public Library or from the interactive connections through the city's website. We received many thoughtful and written spoken recommendations from conferees who attended our committee meetings and citizens who attended our public hearings. Many of these recommendations have been incorporated in our recommendations. Several city council members and Mayor Wogast attended our sessions and provided helpful insight as well. We became aware of some common and recurrent themes and concerns of the public which have led to some of our recommendations. Most importantly, we learned of areas of internal concern that need to be addressed by clarifying the roles of our elected officials in the language of the charter ordinance. So throughout its work, the committee benefited from professional staff who coordinated and attended all the meetings. Vicky Buning, assistant to Mayor Wogast, who prepared the agendas and coordinated communications with the public, and the press and made arrangements for the facilities to accommodate our meetings. Brenda Younger, the Topeka City Clerk, who researched information from other cities, provided verbatim minutes, and who captured lengthy public comments flawlessly. And also Deputy City Attorney Mary Feeney, who helped define the scope and the committee's inquiry, explained the workings of the Kansas statutory law, and provided suggested language as it applies to the charter ordinance of Topeka. The Citizens Committee held its initial meeting on January 23rd, and in completing its assignment, had 11 separate meetings and two public hearings. The committee's January 30th meeting featured a presentation by Don Moller, former executive director of the Kansas League of Municipalities. And that's important because any briefing, Don Moller identified what's perhaps the main area of concern. The overriding matter of concern to us is no clear direction. The general term of the mayor and the district council members is used frequently without the charter ordinance. Mr. Moller believes that Topeka may have the only charter ordinance in the state and possibly in the nation written in this manner. He believes that the language contributes to misunderstanding and leads to an unintended divisive relationship. And Topeka, the mayor is not thought of as just a figurehead by the citizenry, regardless of what might have been intended by the 2004 actions. The mayor has a part to play that should make him or her the focal point of the governing body. Mr. Moller suggested that the committee consider the roles of the mayor and the council members in terms of governing body. The charter ordinance was written in a way that creates unnecessary tension in city government because there's no clear direction as to the rules of the mayor or council members as a governing body. Moller believes that some current language trying to limit the mayor's authority to vote and may violate statutory authority. So we heard from former Mayor Bunton, who told the committee that the duties of city council were unclear beyond establishing a meeting time and electing a deputy mayor. He pointed out the council members vote on legislation as members of the governing body, and it's the governing body which is vested with the power of legislation, and that body includes the mayor. The council members vote on legislation as members of the governing body, and it's the governing body that does the voting. Currently, the mayor's a member of the governing body and not a member of the council. Some items require a vote of the governing body, others require a vote of the city council. He believes that the mayor should not be voting on legislation, which he or she is empowered to veto. All of that from former Mayor Bunton. Mayor Wogast told us that he sees the council and mayor as a working unit, and rather than assuming adversarial roles, he believes the current process and terminology is confusing for council members and for the public. He recommended the governing body be the primary term under the charter. So all of this has led the committee to the realization that the attempt to diminish roles of the governing body, which was undertaken by popular request in 2004, resulted in the adoption of charter language that's vague and created uncertainties. It's likely that the current language is out of step with certain provisions of the state law. As the roles of the mayor and council members have become more harmonious, it's time to recognize the fact that a well-run city requires a united governing body, sharing responsibility and acting to give direction and purpose to the city manager. Therefore, the committee recommends that all 10 governing body members will be voting members with the exception that the mayor will not have a vote on any matter upon which he or she has been given veto power by operation of law. The other recommendations, and all, by the way, all recommendations of the committee are by unanimous consent. Addressing the form of government, the committee supports the council manager form of government. As far as composition, all nine districts be retained, and that all district representatives have equal vote, equal voice and power on the governing body. Doug Wright, the former mayor and city attorney, said that the commission form of government proved to be an unfair system because four out of the five commission members were of the same ethnic race and from the same geographic area of the city. The current process of district elections should remain so that everyone has a voice in local government and is provided the opportunity to communicate with the council person they can relate to. He believes district elections are a good fit for Topeka. While the number of council members in Topeka is larger than most, but not all, Kansas cities, most of the council members and a number of the public commentators express satisfaction with the current average ratio of one council member to 14,500 constituents. City manager Jim Colson indicated he has no problem with the current number, and he said he's worked with larger governing bodies in other cities. The committee recommends that governing body members be elected on a nonpartisan basis. It was noted that a current state initiative seems designed to turn local elections into partisan elections. There's a great resistance to this by the League of Women Voters of Topeka County and the Kansas League of Municipalities. We believe that combining city elections with other elections that are partisan does not seem to be a good idea. That all members continue to stand for election every four years on a staggered election basis. However, Topeka citizen Jason Fazell pointed out the unfairness in the current system that could be corrected. Namely, the mayor is elected on a four-year term in the same election as odd-numbered council member district seats. So any council person holding an odd-numbered district seat must give up their seat to run for mayor, while a council person in an even-numbered seat does not. Mr. Fazell offered two solutions. One is to require even-numbered district council people to relinquish their seat if they run for mayor. Or two, make the mayor's term six years so that odd-numbered districts would stand for election with the mayor during one election cycle and then the even-numbered districts during the next. While we stayed with the four-year term, one term limited to six years makes an intriguing That primary and general elections continue to be held at the current election dates. The committee considered suggestions from former Mayor Bunton and the public, and public commentators, that voter turnout would be larger if city elections were held in August and November in conjunction with other elected officials rather than in February and April. The League of Women Voters of Topeka County and the League of Kansas Municipalities strongly oppose this suggestion. Although the purported purpose is to increase voter turnout, the league indicates that moving elections to November of odd years will have little impact on voter turnout, with only about a 10 percent increase in voter turnout being documented in those states that have implemented that change. Concern was expressed that local elections will be totally overshadowed by the heavily financed and intensive state and federal races. A move to August and November would disrupt the traditional budget cycle for cities and schools and complicate the timing of financial interest reports required to be filed by Kansas officials. The city governing bodies and school boards in the state overwhelmingly favor continuing 153 years of spring elections. We see no reason to disagree. At-large representation. Councilman Schmidt encouraged the committee to look at how the charter could be used by the governing body to be more responsive to the needs of the city as a whole. He urged the committee to consider the matter of at-large representations. Neil Dobler, former city, acting city manager, appeared in his role as the board chairman of the Greater Topeka Chamber of Commerce. He stated there's strong support for the current form of government, and he indicated there's also public support for changing council district representation to include at-large districts. He recommended that seven council members represent the districts and two at-large members be elected, and two members be elected at large. Former city administrator John Arnold spoke to the committee, and he told the committee that over his career, he's worked in 10 cities, and every one of those cities had some form of at-large representation. The committee considered well-researched arguments by Mr. Alan Lochner, and it was decided that the time had come to introduce the at-large concept. So the committee recommends that the governing body be a 10-member body consisting of nine members running for election from the city council districts where they reside, and a mayor who resides in the city and is elected at large. During a primary election held within the district, the two nominees from each district, receiving the greater number of votes within the district, will stand for election in the general election on an at-large basis. Mr. Lochner identified two situations where problems can arise in mixed at-large systems. One is when at-large positions are perceived by the council to be, or the public, to be superior to that of district members. When at-large candidates are perceived to be rivals to the mayor. While other methods of running at large were considered by the committee, they required changing the composition of the districts or creating two classes of elected governing body officials. In the end, the committee decided that the school board voting method treated all council members equally, placed them on the same level, accomplished the ends of the community-wide representation, and offered the path of least resistance to implementation. The 501 school board candidates file for office and run in primary election by district, with citywide voters choosing one of two candidates from each district. One downside with this recommendation is the possible increase in expense for candidates to get their campaign messaging out. Another downside that pointed out by Councilman Schmidt is that a candidate could win overwhelmingly in his or her district and yet lose out in the general election. The powers of the governing body. The committee recommends referring to, changing the reference to council or council member to governing body and the governing body member. The committee would retain the language indicated, and the governing body will have no administrative powers. And we suggested modeling that after the corporate model. The governing body is the equivalent of the city's board of directors, and the manager is the equivalent of the chairman of the board. The city manager is the equivalent of the city's CEO, chief executive officer tasked with administrative duties, including carrying out policy, legislation, ordinances, strategic plans, and budget approved by the body. Finally, the mayor's functions, powers, and duty. The committee recommends that the mayor serve as the presiding member of the, for the purpose of conducting business meeting of the city, and as such, the mayor would chair the committee of the entire body, such as budget committee and the committee of the whole. That the mayor shall review the budget, the strategic plan prepared by the city manager, and provide input and provide recommendations. And modifying the current charter ordinance language to allow the mayor to vote on policy, legislation, budget, and procedures, except where the mayor has no veto power expressly mandate, or has veto power expressly mandated by the state statute. So the committee recommends the governing body adopt language provided by the deputy city attorney, and that language can be found in your appendix. Finally, the recommendation was for having a consolidation of government, again came up. This time, it was with the idea of doing a long-range plan. It was felt that a long-range plan doesn't hold any imminent, cause any imminent fear and makes people much more willing to consider things over a long, a longer period of time. We also recommend that the committee consider expanding to, to allow for five commissioners instead of three. The final recommendation that I want to bring before you has to do with the salaries. And one of the things that we recognized is that the salary for the mayor is particularly, has been reduced considerably. At one time, it was over 60,000, 60,000, and then it was reduced to about 20,000. And, but the duties have pretty much stayed the same, and we expect that the duties of the mayor will only increase over time as they serve to head up committees and also serve as the kind of representative for the city of Topeka. The city council salaries, we note that have, actually, were looked at about 10 years ago, and nothing was done. I was on the city council when the last raise came along, and that was about 1998 or so. So it's been 15 years since the city council has had a raise. We, we've, we've found very little resistance to the idea among the public. In fact, we found advocates for that as we held our, that held our public hearings. So it's been an honor and a privilege for all of us to serve. We want to thank the council members for appointing us and allowing us to, to consider these matters, and we found in the process that we learned an awful lot. And we also developed a very strong appreciation of what you all do as, as public servants. So with that, we'll say thank you very much. We hope you'll consider our recommendations and that you find them helpful, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Reardon? Ms. Hiller?
I don't have a question, but I did sit in on some of the hearings, and I'm just so impressed with how thorough you were and how thoughtful, and you really did engage the public, and I'm really pleased and proud of that whole process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council members, if you haven't had time, I would encourage you to go through this. In your materials, your handouts tonight, there was one page omitted in the appendix number two, where, which was the examples of items upon which the mayor votes and doesn't vote. And in the, in the booklet, we only list what the mayor does not vote on. In case you're interested, there is another page which lists some items where the mayor does vote. So that particular, and then on appendix three is the section where the deputy city attorney found some aspects in our charter that are, in a sense, whether either in violation or not in agreement with state statute, that, in a sense, it's source, some more cleanup material. And then the appendix number five was really a rather in-depth presentation made by Alan Lochner, which I think you would find interesting from his view of, he's a student of municipal government, and what his views are. And what I understand is that at the next juncture, at some point, we will have this as a discussion item in the, in a, in a council meeting, at which time then, perhaps we could go over the recommendations, and the council would vote. That's, this is the council issue. I'm just suggesting that is a possibility, that, that we would, how we could do this going forward. And then, of course, those would be put into an ordinance for our, for our action. Any, any other questions or comments? Mr. Reardon? I'm sorry, Mr., yeah, Mr. Schmidt.
I just wanted to say thank you again. I had several meetings with the committee. They were, they were wonderful, professional, and, and did an excellent job of uncovering a lot of stuff that is not that easy to uncover in city government and how it, how it works with our state laws that, that govern that as well. So thank you all very much for stepping up and taking on that duty.
Thank you. Yes.
I do have a question, and Jim, maybe you can answer it, or you, mayor, or someone. Our, in, a couple of years after the ordinance was passed last time, the council passed a supplement to that that overlaid some of the sections and required that to change them, they would have to be a vote of the public rather than just the council. Are any of the recommendations that you've made ones that would need to go to a vote of the public?
I don't really know that.
Okay.
We, I think the committee sort of discussed that, and it's really, we would go to legal.
I figured the public might want to know.
Right. And I think it depends on, on some of the recommendations. Some of the recommendations are actually, I think, the, within the power of the, the council, and others, the, the charter says, these have to be approved by the people.
Okay.
They have to be put to a vote. So I think there is some, there's not a clear.
Some of each.
Some of each, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Because some of these details were, have been so hard to come by, in other words, you're operating under a limited amount of detail on your documentation, it really led us to the understanding of why it's important to, about every 10 years, have this kind of thing where some of these things can be cleared out and cleaned up and straightened out.
Good, yeah, good point. And again, thank you all very much for the service that you provided. This is, we're indebted to you for the time and all that you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With no other presentations, we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wogast.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Everhart.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Man Speaker.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
And Hart.
I believe we have no additions to the agenda. Mr. Colson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to, at this point, since there are so many people here that may be waiting on this item, and, and a lot of, several council members had made a request that, that we would pull the CIP item from today's meeting and hold it during the June 3rd meeting. There are some questions that we want to get back to. There was also some comments about last meet, last week was fairly long meeting, and people wanted a better chance to get through it. So staff is certainly open to that, doesn't have any impact on us, but we'd rather pull it than, now, as opposed to waiting later and deferring it until next week. But it will come back on June 3rd.
Okay, so that's item 5C.
And if I could also say, I think 5D is, is related to it, so we should handle those both at the same time.
That would be pulling both items, action items 5C and 5D.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved. Wait, we, we don't need a motion to, to withdraw items from the agenda, so that will be taking place. Now we're ready for the consent agenda. The clerk would read.
It is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Mike Wilson.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Mike Wilson to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending May 31, 2016. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Thomas Wolcamp to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending May 31, 2016. C is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Jeff Roman to the Board of Plumbing Examiners for a term ending May 31, 2016. D is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Neil Carlson to the Board of Plumbing Examiners for a term ending May 31, 2016. E is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Charles Smelter to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending June 30, 2016. F is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Bill Beechey to the Topeka Human Relations Commission for a term ending May 31, 2016. G is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Lorraine Williams to the Topeka Human Relations Commission for a term ending May 31, 2016. H is a resolution introduced by councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Randy Wheat an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. I as meetings of the regular, minutes of the regular meeting of May 31, 2014, and there are no applications.
Okay, you have heard the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Ms. De La Isla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, consent agenda is approved. And if you will, if you will note, council members, I think this might be a first, that we have this many all reappointments, and the first five are professional. And I don't think, I don't know if any of those professional appointments are here this evening. You wouldn't expect it, they're being reappointed, but I do want to just mention that these are generally, there are specific requirements to be on these boards. They have to be licensed or certain degrees of ability, and we certainly appreciate these people who serve. I was, it was pointed out that Mr. Wolcamp, Wolcamp Construction, has been on the Building and Fire Appeals Board since its inception. So it's certainly timely to see this degree of devotion and commitment. And then the last two, I want to introduce Bill Beechey, if you would stand, Mr. Beechey, and then Lorraine Williams, both being appointed to the Human Relations Commission. Bill's the former head of the Center of Justice, of Peace and Justice, and Lorraine is the current president of the Human Relations Commission. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it, and thanks to all the others. We will proceed then with the action items. Item 5A is an ordinance on domestic partnership registry.
A is an ordinance introduced by councilmember Chad Mannspeak concerning domestic partnership registry by the creating new Chapter 2150 of the City of Topeka Municipal Code.
Mr. Councilmember Mannspeak, and we had a discussion last week when it went to more detail, and I think you want to give an overview.
Yeah.
And then we'll proceed with our.
What I hope to do, if it's all right with you, is I've got a little bit of something here I'd like to read, and then I'll turn it over to the city attorney so that he can provide the details.
Okay.
All right, thank you. It's been a long time coming here. I want to thank real quickly council staff and the HRC committee who worked with me over these last couple, three months crafting this legislation. There was a significant amount of thoughtful contemplation on how best to address equality issues in the city of Topeka. We've had four public meetings, three committee meetings, and one open discussion at last week's council meeting. I will say at all four of these meetings, there have been no one who voiced opposition or concerns with the legislation as it is written. We have received a number of emails since about Saturday of this week, the email of last week. The email we received the most was a form letter that said the same message pretty much verbatim over and over, and I just wanted to point out a couple of issues that I took with the letter. One of it said that we are seeking to, we are trying to grant special new considerations for homosexual behavior in Topeka. Sexual orientation is an identity, not a behavior. Sexual orientation has been covered in the city employment policy for some time with no concerns and no issues or pushback on it. The effort to, the next thing they said was, "The effort to establish domestic partnership registry in our city is concerning to me. Marriage is between one man and one woman, and we do not need to create a marriage substitute in Topeka. I do not think it is wise to add the task of managing a domestic partnership registry to all the other services our city already provides. Our tax dollars should be spent on other work. I also believe a domestic partnership to be contrary to the Kansas State Constitution." The domestic partnership does not create a marriage substitute. It does not confer any rights or responsibilities. Management of the registry will not be time-consuming. The fees that will be designed in to cover the costs, so no tax dollars will be spent on it. Another thing that they said, or one other issue that I would like to point out is that Lawrence has had a domestic partnership registry standing for some time now, and it stood, it has not had a constitutional question called on it. So, so far, so good, as far as constitutionality is concerned. The next thing that was brought up, gender identity is a term describing the symptoms of a psychological condition called gender identity disorder, and I do not believe that creating protections for such conditions is wise. Well, the American Psychological Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and the American Medical Association have all endorsed gender identity as an authentic identity and made calls for protection from discrimination. Gender identity disorder is no longer a diagnosis. Transgender people are not classified by the DSM-5 as having a psychological disorder. Where you may be confused is there is something in the DSM-5 titled gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria is when someone who is transgendered cannot cope with who they are because of the environment that they live in, that they are driven to this madness because they're not able to be who they want to be. So the issues are really pretty, pretty clear-cut to me. Science is coming down solidly on the truth that gender identity is an immutable characteristic set in the womb. As far as protections granted by our constitution, well, I've already discussed that. It was also mentioned in email to me that we should get busy working on other such things as jobs and economic development, but to me, this is economic development. It tells prospective employers and their employees that Topeka is an open community that values all people and all relationships and treats everyone on an equal playing field. The things that are coming before us this evening do not extend beyond the limits of the city of Topeka as a functioning entity. They don't, they don't put controls on any public or any businesses, they don't put controls on anybody's housing situation. All it does is change things for us here within the city. And I hope that that remains clear. And with that, I will turn it over to city attorney Sublet for the details.
Mr. Sublet, did you want to review this, the particular ordinance?
Yes, we went into detail paragraph by paragraph this last week, so I'll kind of summarize some of those, and then however the mayor wants to proceed from that point on. Lines 13 through 21 on page one cover what a domestic partner is. Essentially, those who have reached 18 years of age, have the mental capacity to contract, who live together in a relationship of indefinite duration with a mutual commitment, in which the partners share the necessities of life and are financially interdependent and are not married to another person. Domestic partnership in this entire ordinance would establish a domestic partnership registration in which people that meet the criteria could place their names on that registration. They have to be residents, meaning they establish at least 60 consecutive days of residency with the city of Topeka prior to registering. Lines 29, on page two, lines 29 through 47 establish the criteria. A lot of them I just went through when we were defining domestic partnership. And the only two I think I didn't mention, the two individuals are not related by blood in any way that would prevent them from being married to another in the state of Kansas. And both individuals agree to file a declaration of domestic partnership with the city. Registration starts on line 50 and goes through line 60. The two persons seeking to register to file a declaration of domestic partnership with an office of the city designated by the city manager. And if you previously filed a declaration of domestic partnership, you can't file a new one until 90 days when you've been requested to be removed. So there'd be essentially a 90-day waiting period if you've been asked to be removed before you can reregister. Procedures and fees, page 61 through 75, essentially, it's up to the city manager's office to establish the procedures and fees for registration. And just to give you some idea, the city clerk and I financed met with the city of Lawrence this week to go over how their process works. According to the clerk, they spend very little time. It doesn't take a lot of staff time. Most of it's set up online, where somebody can just register online, submit their payment, and then, of course, they have the ability, people can walk in if they'd like to do that. Their fee is $75, and that covers all of their staff time and anything associated with it. They don't charge, some cities charge a fee when somebody wants to be removed, a fee upfront, and a fee when they want to be removed. Lawrence just charges that $75 fee, and it covers both the registration and if there wasn't removal. And I think I went over it last week, but since the inception, Lawrence has had, I think it was 67 people register, 37 of those in the first year. So there wasn't, you know, an overwhelming number. Lines on page four, line 75, and it goes into the next page through 107, goes to removal from the registry. Can be removed for a number of reasons. One of the partners dies and the city's notified, requests for removal from one of the domestic partners, and there's procedures for going through that removal. And it kind of goes through that 90 days again. And then in lines 97 through 101, "A former domestic partner who has given a copy of the declaration of domestic partnership to any third party to qualify for any benefit or right shall notify that third party in writing of their request for removal." It's not us notifying them, it's the party that notifies them, because there are some corporations, companies that offer domestic partner benefits. So if they're, if somebody's removed from the registry, then they have to notify that third party of the removal. And then, page six, lines 123 through 130, essentially, it's subject to the Kansas Open Records Act. There was a discussion about whether the registry is subject to CORA, and it is. And then it's a misdemeanor to register somebody without that individual's consent. So I know I went through it kind of paragraph by paragraph last week. I want to give the overview this week. And again, this doesn't create any mandates on anybody, it doesn't create any legal rights or responsibilities. It's simply a, it's simply a registry, and then, again, if those corporations, companies do offer domestic partnership rights, then this would be proof of the domestic partnership.
Are there questions for Mr. Sublet? See, Ms. Ortiz?
Thank you. Chad, they can't hear you. I'm having people on the front row telling me they can't hear you.
And I have heard, I think that sometimes we need to pull these closer to us, because I've had that comment too, that sometimes people can't hear us. So, you know, if you lean forward, sometimes makes a difference. Okay, thank you. We will proceed with the, with the public comment, and just some background on that, we have 20 people who have signed up. We have, as you know, each person has four minutes. We certainly want to give you the opportunity to address the council. When you come up, at the end of three minutes, a white light comes on, and then when the red light comes on, you've, your four minutes is up. We really would ask that, if possible, you try to condense your, or start finalizing when the white light comes on, because with as many speakers, and then we have 17 on the next one, so that's approximately two and a half hours or so that we will have a public comment. So we want to keep the comments concise as we can. I will always introduce the first person and then the next person, so, and if that second person could come near the front, if you're in the middle of the row or towards the back, so that we can move quickly from one speaker right on to the next. And then finally, you are addressing the council. This is not a time to address individual members of the council, and it's not a question-and-answer session. It's a time for you to present your views to the council as a whole. The first speaker is Vicki George, to be followed by Louis Dalton.